Thank you.
Okay, um, we have a motion to open the continued public hearing and MBTA communities zoning.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, any discussion, roll call vote, Mr. Boasi.
Aye.
Mr. English.
Aye.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney.
Aye.
Mr. Orbin.
Aye.
Those were them size six in favor and unopposed. Motion carries. So where do we stand at this point?
Oh, 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 I would love to hear, I did not go because of the um, public meeting law, but I would love to hear from anyone who did go on May ninth. What their impressions were of that. Presentation.
Okay, well, there were three of us, Mr. English, Mr. Maloney, myself, and Rachel was also there. Um. Guess we'll go in alphabetical order, Mr. English, you want to share your thoughts on the on that presentation from that night?
Well, I have a lot of thoughts. A lot of information to digest, uh, I did get some new uh, things that I was unaware of, uh, in this, in this bylaw. Um, Jim, I would encourage you, the video is up, I actually have already looked at it again. So it is up and you can, you can review it, the, I'll caution you that the, the attorney from the, from Linfield. I think he was previously a FedEx commercial fast talker, I mean, guys, he, he goes at a hundred miles an hour.
Yeah, yeah, he does.
You gotta really be focused to follow him, but uh, clearly he's very knowledgeable, he's up to his, his uh, knickers in this topic. Uh, one of the things Jim that I took away that I thought was interesting is that uh, church properties were not exempt from this overlay district. And the first thought I had, uh, and I don't want to get hit by a bolt of lightning when I walk out the door tonight, but uh, the first thought I had, uh, was the Abbey. There's a huge chunk of land there and I don't know. You know, what? What's, what is happening? I know they've developed some of it, uh, for solar farms, uh, presumably leasing that land for for income. I don't think they pay taxes, but I don't really know, maybe Rachel can answer that. But that was, that was the takeaway for me beyond the really multitude of, uh, of, of angles at which interfere with and enable this, so. It was a, it was a very interesting presentation, but that's, that, that is the that's the elevator pitch, Jim. That's it.
Uh. Mr. Maloney, do you have?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I enjoyed the presentation, I mean, it's, it's primarily geared toward, uh, it, it, it basically offers a couple of strategies or maybe a few strategies for towns that want to resist uh, the MBGA Communities Act. Um, and talked, but it talked a great deal about, about, uh, you know, um, past general law this and chapter that and so forth, but it was, I mean, it was interesting enough, I, I, and I'm, I like it, I think it, it works well with what the selectmen, uh, with the select board is, uh, trying to do, just to sort of work on a two or three pronged uh, two or three root, uh, two or three track route. And uh, so I was impressed with, I was impressed with the attorney, I was not impressed with the fellow who preceded him, the guy from Rockport. Uh, but, but the attorney himself, I think wa- was pretty good. Uh, I think you, uh, Chuck, asked a really good question toward the end, which is, well, you know, wha- how, how was the projected outcome? If you do decide to contest this with the state, how is the projected outcome of any litigation going to be different from, uh, you're contesting a forty B uh, proposal? And um, the attorneys, i- it's, it's, it's uncharted territory in one sense, because it's a new law. It was good, it was informative. Uh, I, I think probably we should continue along the track that we have been pursuing. But uh, thank you.
Yeah, just, so the question that I asked him that night was, one of, one of the lawsuits um, being brought before the, against the state uh, is, is based on the constitutionality of the state imposing zoning regulations on the town, based on, I believe it is, I'll probably get the number wrong, but I think it's article eighty-nine of the state constitution. Um, which deals with home rule, which was something that was passed in the eighteen sixties, I think they said?
Eighteen sixty-six.
Sixty-six, right. Um, basically saying that towns had the right to determine their own zoning and that the state did not have the right to interfere with that. Um, and my question was, how, how does this section three A of forty A? How is that not constitutional? How, how do you, how are you going to prove that that's not constitutional when you've been unable to prove forty B to be unconstitutional? It has, it has withstood every legal challenge, it's that's been put up against it. Um, and he didn't, he, he kind of differentiated, and, and I also brought up uh, the state requiring us to zone for medical marijuana. The state requiring us to zone for adult entertainment, now the adult, adult entertainment, yeah, that, that comes down to First Amendment, that's, you know, that's federal law, that's what trumps that. But how, how? How does this thing differ from those in, in the constitutionality argument? I don't know that I really got a clear answer on that, he kind of said, well, this one was this and this one is this, but we don't really know and.
He did not anticipate that question, Chuck.
Right. So, so basically what it comes down to is the law might get thrown out in court. Right. The law might not, and if it does not, um, you know, if, if we're on the other side of it, we need to be prepared as a town to face those consequences, whatever they may be. Um, my, one of my disappointments with the presentation, and I understand that there, you know, that these people were coming from a long distance is that the presentation took up the vast majority of the time we were there. And the question and answer portion of it was very truncated, I, I, I asked one question, I had probably ten that I wanted to ask um, in that forum. Um, and I was unable to do so because I didn't want to take up, you know, there were other people that had questions to ask. Um, I did get the attorney's contact information, I, I do plan on, on emailing him the questions that I hadn't asked. Um, and when I get those responses, I'm certainly going to come back to the board and share them, but I have, I have um, you know, some questions about what steps the state could take, because one of the things that they keep talking about with the law, the law itself was very basic, there was, there was not a lot of meat to the original legislation. Um, and it only talked about four particular, or I guess originally it was three particular grant programs that we would be ineligible for. And then they added a fourth one. Um, and that was what the legislature voted on. But the since then, the E A, EO HLC has come up with these guidelines and these directives, they've included thirteen more grant programs, so there's seventeen potential grant programs that the town could be. Um, it could be a risk for the town to be able to get, and one of the points that they kept making was all it all it will do is mean that you can't apply for, state will say you're not eligible to apply for them. Um, but as we saw in the case of Milton, Milton had a grant, they had it in their pocket. Um, and the state pulled it away from them. So my concern continues to be um, how, how far does the state plan on going to keep with, with the stick beating, you know, beating the towns into submission, there's no carrot at the end of this, it's just a stick. And how big is that stick going to get? Uh, but yeah, if you, I would definitely say it's worth watching that, that presentation. I did watch a presentation on YouTube that they had done in Gloucester. Was the same attorney and there was somebody from a planning board up that way. Uh, but the attorney was the real, the real driver of that whole um, presentation, so it definitely is, is worth at least watching.
I will do so. Uh, thank you, uh, man, I appreciate your, your thoughts on the matter. I, I continue to think that our job here is to try to gather the information and define as clearly as possible the choices so that we can make a recommendation. And I think the select board is doing a good job of trying to gather the resources and gather and, and explore the options. You know, so that we can have that information when we make our recommendation on whatever the, you know, the, well, I guess the motion is accept accept the law, right? Or is the motion deny the law, it's one of the two.
Right.
And then depending on our clear understanding of which of the two it is, our recommendation, right, to in favor of the motion, no, no action or, you know, to put the motion down, so. You know, I, I, I want to, I, I try to separate my personal opinions and emotions around this thing from my job as a planning board, ever, as best I can. And uh, and so I will go watch the presentation and, um, you know, I as always, it's, it's our job to have the town's best interests at heart. Even though the town may be fifty-fifty split on what the best interests are, so, see what happens there.
Um, I know, one of the things that, that came up too is, is the fact that the, the threshold has been lowered for this particular um, zoning change at town meeting, ordinarily, it's required a two-thirds majority to change any zoning. Um, but through some classifications of what this zoning would be, the state has determined that it only would require a simple majority to pass a town meeting. Um, should we want to reverse it after, because the, the, the thought was brought up, well, what if we pass this? And then the law gets thrown out in court. Determined unconstitutional, they can't impose it, can the town then go back and vote to rescind the zoning, and we can. Um, we always have that option. Uh, but two things, it would require two-thirds to rescind what only took a simple majority to vote in. And in the interim between the time we pass it and the time we rescind it, if anybody puts in an application to build any of these projects, they would get locked into it, but we know that from, you know, our actions with the planning board, they lock into the current zoning, so.
Right.
So that was another thing that got brought up. Um, you know, I think I, my thinking as, as the planning board, what we need to concentrate on right now is, is really sort of parent down to what areas we feel are um, best for this particular zoning, whether we want to go with what's been proposed, whether we want to look at other parcels of land, um, throughout the town. Um, break it up into smaller pieces or just do one or two large chunks.
Rachel. I guess, I guess the, there's another question I have, which came up at the last, um, meeting that, uh, with regards to the outlets, right? And it is, it is intended that there's some kind of access to a downtown center type place. I- i- Rachel, my question for you, is that like a hard and fast, like if you don't meet, like you have to be within such and it has to be ba-ba-ba-ba. You know, it's just like, it's suggested that it be convenient and safe and, you know, child friendly or, you know, what's the what's the act, do we know what the actual language is about that?
As I noted in the last meeting and that I got, um, pushback on, um, these are guidelines, they're um, and so we don't know, there's only two communities out of the hundred and seventy-seven that have gotten approvals from both the AG and HLC. So if you want to try it, if you feel very passionately about that, and that's what's going to get passed at town meeting, then let's submit it, let's submit it to a pre-application review, let's go through all that, all that stuff and see if it passes. I, I, I.
That might be.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't, I left my magic eight ball, um, somewhere.
No, I'm not asking you to know, but I'm saying.
And, and I wish I did, and I, you know.
If there's a way to prevent it.
Right.
It may, it would, it would be convenient for the town to do it that way. I don't know why we wouldn't try that, maybe that's a, an option.
So the, the, the the guidelines on, on the, the pre, pre-vetting, as you put it, Jim. Rachel, that's gonna be ninety days before the, the vote, right, and we don't have a vote scheduled as of yet, so we don't know what the ninety day window is, that we would have to submit it to the state. But I, yeah, I think if they want to try to put things through, we should know whether, you know, we go to all the bother of, of having the vote at town meeting and then have the state turn around and say, no, this doesn't meet the requirements, you're not in compliance. Which is one of the things that I said, that I got pushed back on, was told I was speculating, but that's beside.
Yeah, and there's nothing saying that you can't do it a hundred and twenty days before, you know, to, you know, to give yourself some buffer. They just say at least, at least ninety, because the attorney gen, the, so what, HLC, the attorney general is just similar to what they do with other zoning amendments, your zoning bylaws, they're just reading the bylaw to make sure it's sound, it's not arbitrary. Um, what HLC is doing, formerly DHCD, they're actually taking that bylaw and they're reviewing your whole entire zoning bylaw as well, to make sure that you're not asking for things in this overlay district that you're not asking for in other, other projects. Um, you know, so that's, it's taking a very long time, and there's only about three or four people in that office, and they've got a hundred and thirty communities this year that are trying to, um, that are going to have to meet compliance. And they're trying to prioritize those communities that are in their spring town meeting, trying to go for their spring town meeting. Um, so just FYI, the sooner, that's all to say, submit it as soon as you, you know, figure it out.
Well, let's go down this rabbit hole for a minute, so.
I love rabbits, they're all in my backyard. I got a, I got a little clutch of baby rabbits in the backyard.
How much say do we have in the actual project that gets built? Let's say we did put it at the outlets, let's say the outlets failed. And let's say the somebody came in and wanted to take that and put in seven hundred and fifty units or whatever the heck it is, right? How much say do we have over the configuration of that development?
Yeah, so.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Alfred, did you have an answer to that, or are you?
I did some research along those lines, but Rachel, you go ahead first, if you had response.
So the overlay, you can, you know, so long as the dimensional standards that you put in there meet the fifteen units per acre, you can, you know, meet, you can put whatever you want in there. And then there's also another step that you can create design guidelines, so again, they're meet, they have another thing to sort of hang the hat on as this is what you want to see, the board wants to see. And yes, you can still require a site plan approval, and I understand that was also a comment at that May ninth meeting that uh, uh, developers don't have to apply for that, and I would beg to differ because they have to do that for solar farms, which are much higher and, uh, you know, protected use in the state, um, and you still have to go through site plan approval for that. Um, you can't just go and get a building permit, um, for those items. Um, so it has been done in, in the past in other, um, zoning districts, it's a, typically you see this on a forty R district, which he did talk about as well, um, and they've done, been done throughout the state.
So, be- before Alfred goes, so my idea here is, if we did that and then we put in conditions that they have to build some kind of a village green area in there and some kind of a, you know, uh, something that resembles a downtown, or a, you know, a town center area or whatever that is as part of the development, maybe that does actually provide an option that's acceptable to everybody, if, if it's, you know, if we can put in those those, you know, whatever requirements suggest, whatever we can do and say, you know, so, because it is right next to four ninety-five and Route one A, I mean, it couldn't be closer to however they're going to need to get to the T.
Yeah, I mean, so is the, so is the four ninety-five Wampum area as well, um, but, and I've also seen.
This gives us a large chunk of land that's currently not, not going to be changed unless it fails. And the select board has a good point, if, if that retail outlet fails for some reason, it would be nice to have something in there for tax base.
So, so Lexington, I believe they included in theirs, um, that they had to include parks, um, you know, or playgrounds as well, which I thought was a very clever, you know, it was very creative. Um, because they're supposed to be good for families, um, too.
So, I don't know, so that's my thinking, but Alfred, please, whatever you've been researching.
Well, I was looking at, around at presentations on this from other planning boards and, um, Norwell had some interesting things put in there, zoning overlay requirement. Like, you want to include the site plan review, ten percent affordable housing, you could go up, I don't know. But it should at least be ten percent, so we don't lose compliance there. And then they had requirements on frontage landscaping on the perimeter, no junk storage, um, screening for like compressors, generators, dumpsters, parking requirements, screening for the parking, and then recreation for families as well. Also, in a different one, I saw requirements for dog park space if they allow dogs, so. I mean, all that stuff made sense for me and gives us a little bit of control on if anything ever does get developed. Um, and so I just was wondering, you know, what everyone thought about that sort of stuff, also, I just wanted to say on, in, for the outlets, you know, I think it's not a bad solution. I just don't know if it's compliant, so if we want to go with the outlets, I feel like we should go through that preapproval process as soon as possible to find out. It, to me, it's a little bit more of a gray area, whether it's compliant, but it might be fine and, but would, that was a good point Gallo made about you know, it could get redeveloped into housing if there's an issue with the mall in the future, that makes sense. So, uh, I would just say we should, I don't know what steps need to be taken to do that, but since it is more of a gray area, whether it fits, we should do that as soon as possible, but that's a.
And again, that would require us coming up with our guidelines, so that when we, when we put those guidelines on, we think it causes the development to comply. And we present it as a package, like we would put these guidelines in place for this place, so that when they were done with it, should they decide to go ahead, it would satisfy your requirements. To me, that's a package, and if we wanted to try to do that and see if it works, it seems to me like we'd have the least I mean, it, it's the most attractive action, option for the town, from what I'm hearing from the select board and everyone else, do you all agree? Do you think it doesn't make? How do y'all feel about that?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Maloney.
Yeah, thank you, I, I, I'm with Mr. Lawrence on this one, I, I hadn't even thought of the outlets until somebody brought it up recently, but, but the justification for it is not cynical, it actually makes sense. Um, th- 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 look, it, it's in the best interest of the ti, and I'm thinking out loud, I haven't convinced myself it's a perfect idea, but I'm glad it would, it's come up tonight. If anything happened down there, as did recently happen in Kidderi, Maine, um, you would have a Plan B almost immediately ready to go, it's about a hundred and twenty-two acres down there at the outlets, they're, they're requiring fifty, uh, so you wouldn't even have to zone the entire thing for this purpose. But it, it just gives you, it, it just, it, it's, it's in the town's interest that it could be converted right away. Just as Kidderi is going to be converted to, uh, residences as well, also, I, I, you know, Jim, I, I'm not going to worry too much, I'm not going to preempt myself on the state here, i- if this is a good idea for us, we should put it forward, and maybe Alfred's right, if we want to do a pre, a pre-vetting, that, fine by me, but the state has enough problems defending this, this, uh, this legislation. Marshfield voted it down since we met last time by two to one, and Foxborough knocked it down nine to one the other night. Um, in their town meeting, Canton passed one, and I know the district that Canton passed, uh, two night, or let's see, was it last night, last night, I guess, with two nights, last night, um, not much is going to get built in that district, it's already built in the, between the two train stations, Norwood passed actually a pretty large uh, allowance of about eighty acres, but more than half of it is in Windsor Gardens, which already has nine hundred units in it. So it's, 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 it's Dedham, heaven's sake, they put it down at, at Legacy Place. That's, that's what they sent it to the state, so I think the state's going to be loaded with applications from people saying, look, it's in the, our town's interest to do it this way, if you want to try to shoot it down, go ahead. You know, but otherwise, if we, I'm, I'm sincere about this, but I think, I actually think that might be a good idea. The, the outlets, it's a good Plan B for us. If it passes mustard, great, if it never comes to be, I'm not going to complain, all these other places, Rachel, that, that we identified as possible locations, we could still develop. I like some of them for development, I didn't like them at fifteen units per acre, but I like them. I think it might be a good idea, we're pro-development, it's just that we'd like to do it on our own terms as much as possible. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm with, uh, I'm with Jim on this and, and Alfred too, thank you.
I also just want to clarify that the communities that have, that you noted are, it's not an apples to apples too, a lot of them, yes, you can put them over existing, um, you know, residential, because you're showing that you're developing it at that density, number one, number two, a lot, Legacy Place, they have a train station. And so you're, they're required to put housing within a certain distance of that train stop as well. Um, so it's not quite an apples to apples, also Foxborough now has a train station. And they're required to put that housing in a certain, you know, location, and again, those communities, they have till the end of this year to, um, pass it, and I, I think I talked to Mike about this as well, is I total, if we, if this had come before at the spring town meeting, it would have been, you know, turned down and I, we would have total expected that to say, hey, planning board, take another look. But at least you would have gotten some feedback, you know, but we have till the end of the year, um, to pass it.
Yeah, you know, Rachel, that's a good point too, you can, I mean, we, we do, whatever we do, it's going to be something that has a reasonable chance of getting passed at town meeting, I mean, that at least shows, look, look, whether we ourselves endorse it, you know, that, that, that might come to be, but at least we can say, look, we can at least justify this on the grounds of sta, of complying with the law and satisfying our own needs to do the best we can for the town. Okay, if the, if the town meeting wants to shoot it down, they're they, of course, they're welcome to do so. But that, that's a good point, and as far as Dedham and the transit, you're right, but Dedham did have other places. I mean, pretty much everything in Dedham is where they have, so they, they could have put it in a lot of places, but it's, it's, I don't want to say the word is cynical, but they the, the Canton and Dedham, I think, and, you know, probably put them created districts that they know are not going to get heavily built, this is why I think the whole law is kind of nutty, but there's a better way to do this, by the way, but that'll, somewhere down the line, we'll get to that. Thank you.
We'll have to take a trip in the Wayback Machine.
Yeah.
Way back in the.
Well, one thing that that site does have going for it is, I would say it's like, if you're talking about traffic on the roads, right? You put it there, if it, if it goes there, if it ever gets built there, and you're going by zero people's houses with all that traffic to get to four ninety-five, maybe one. You know, uh, down on Berry Street or whatever it is. So, you know, that's that's at least something, you know, all the traffic that goes to four ninety-five isn't going through neighborhoods. You know, if you put it at Wampum Corner, you got more, you know, stuff at the light there, you got, you know, whatever it is, I mean, yes, those people are still going to run up to Cumberland Farms and the CVS and yeah, of course, you know, they're, the ones who use the tenant services are going to use the tenant services and you know, that's the way that is, but, but at least a commuter traffic, let's say, or people who have to get out to go to a T, if there are any of those people at the end of the day. You know, they're gonna, they're not going to be going through a bunch of neighborhoods in our town, so they, it has that benefit, and I would. So they it has that benefit. And I would. Like to hear some feedback from the neighbors. Or whatever on that. That parcel. That's unused up there. Where they're parking the Amazon trucks or whatever it is, that old ca- Campgrounds of America. Um, space. And then the other question I have is right next to that. Is that old um? I don't know who bought. That. Auto reclamation pro uh place that was right there that just got sold. I think that. I I forget the family name, but they've had that place forever. Yeah, that's right. Do we have any idea who bought that? That's a that's a bunch of acres up in there, right? I mean, I don't know.
Nobody's bought that yet. The uh Duddy property, former K O A property is uh twenty-two acres. And then the other two um parcels are one split zoned um but. Uh, Armitage, I don't think anybody's bought it as of yet. Um, the junkyard. Too. The only thing in thinking about that is, and the reason why. It wasn't looked at is because of the elevation on that Duddy property. Is so high already. That even if you put a two or three story building on there, it's going to look massive. And then you've got those budding properties to the back there on Wampum and Berry. Is it Wampum? Berry, maybe? Yeah.
It's Berry.
And you know, it would look massive. That was the only, it was, it's already like, okay, I guess you're shocked. What?
I'm sorry. I I didn't know how close that was because I thought there was some wetland back in there. That's all. Sorry, Rachel. I didn't mean to talk over you, but I did. Um. You know, so maybe that's what we want to consider looking at, give that, give that a shot, see if we can get it either approved or shot down and then. Um. If it's approved and the select board thinks it's a good idea, and we think it's a good idea, maybe we've got something we can work with. I don't have anything else for tonight, Mister Chairman.
Now, Mister Chairman, the only uh. I guess downside to the outlets would be um. You you have a very good chance of getting seven hundred and fifty units. I mean, if if catastrophes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I I wouldn't even say catastrophe. They might do it already. You know, I wouldn't say they'd wait till a catastrophe. Um, they would probably.
Good point.
Probably do it ahead of time, just just knowing Simon and and what they're trying to do on their property already. Um, you know, they're already looking at. You know, things to bring in in the off peak um in their parking areas, you know, from circuses to the circ. It's not Cirque du Soleil, but it's like Cirque adjacent. Um, you know, things like that. Not the not the RuPaul Drag Race again. That's not coming again. Um, but. You know, the they're looking to do other things on their property. So I wouldn't say. So yeah, twenty years, but I. They might move quicker than that is all I'm saying.
Okay, or a good point.
Oh. To that point, um, I would also favor making. It requiring mixed use to just to off, like if it were to get developed. To off like, you know, keep commercial income. Because I think we can require that it be a mixed use area. It. Is that right? Like. A first floor commercial.
Yeah, that would be a different um bylaw. So. Yeah, but it could be, we could allow for that.
That changes the number of units required.
It changes the number of units required. You get a reduction in your unit count, but you still have to make up the fifty acres. Um, so. You know, it's just a calculation that until we know if that's what we actually want to do, um, then we can, then I can put, you know, pen to paper and stuff like that.
The. Where are? Kind of feel like we're just, we're talking a lot, but we're not. Going in any direction and what? Would I say that we need to do as as the planning board? Our our part of this responsibility is to. Identify. What we feel are the best parcels. Put that forward. I know that they are, you Rachel, you were doing a lot of homework on. Other parcels that had. Maybe not initially been part of the. The ones that you and the consultant had come up with. Any. Any. Word on that, any? Progress on on. Are there any other parcels that we might want to consider? Or just. Just just eliminate them. I know you said there were a ton of them, and I know, you know, some of them you can take off the list right away. But we need to, we need to come up with something that that we can present to the town and say, this is where we think. Makes some sense.
So, yeah, the locations that I that were ended up with were the ones that, you know. Had the best chance that meet the guidelines and again, the intent of. The state law, which is creating new housing. Um. So there are other locations that were included in the review that were not. Also, that were not like uh sort of highlighted in your master plan either on locations. And I know that Rantham feels like it's huge, but it's not actually, it's not that big, number one. And if you look at your master plan, there's really not that many locations where. The that is are designated as. You know, economic development or excuse me, housing um development areas. Um, so. That reduced the area that I looked at because why would I look at West Rantham? Um. To put this type of a housing, I wouldn't. Because it wasn't locate, it wasn't noted in your master plan. Um, and your master plan is your guide for future development. Um. So if you want to put. Housing on Route one. You know, you just had a Route one rezoning, which was done a few years ago. Housing wasn't contemplated as part of that. I personally don't think that putting more putting housing on Route one where we've already had a lot of accidents since I've been here. Um, you know, but. If you drive up Route one, I don't think there's a lot of other housing except the forty B project in um just south of you. The town just south of you. Um.
Playing, Joe.
Um. And then uh.
I don't know who's planning board proved that one. Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, it wasn't. It was a it was the zoning board of appeals.
It was a. There you go.
Yeah.
That's like Ledview here.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I'm. I'm I'm with you on. Putting housing. That is. Suitable for families, which means kids. Which means schools, which means buses. Throwing buses out onto Route one. Not my idea of a good time.
Yeah, you know, can I just say, Mister Jim, one thing about the suitable for families? The guidelines actually spell out what they mean by that. And it really just, it it says, you you cannot uh create restrictions on squ- uh square footage, number of bedrooms and age.
Right.
That's 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 what it says in the guidelines when it talks about su- suitable for families. We might have other ideas too. But that's what the guideline said. So and we wouldn't have those. I mean, I don't think we ever talked about having such. Uh, you know. Restricting the number of bedrooms of, you know, I I don't think we talked about that at any time, but.
Mister Chairman, you have a couple members of the public here on the call, too. I don't know if they're. Waiting to opine.
Uh, Mister Purdue has their hand up if that's what we're doing. And then Leo.
Yeah, the the only the only point I made, and I haven't looked at this uh closely as you folks have, and. And I'm kind of new into the game, and I did attend that meeting. I. Kind of share a lot of the views that everybody. Uh, it espoused. Um, I have some concerns, you know, if if we, I I understand two things. One is. Yes, Rantham has always been a family friendly place. Um. Seven hundred and fifty. Units in in a fifty square. You guys know better in a fifty uh acre area. You know better than me. Um, what what that generates. And and we don't really have, from a perspective of. My concern is is we don't really have the businesses that support. Adults in those types of. Uh. Types of facilities. So we don't have young people that are going to want to work near, you know, live near they where they work. And so we're looking at, yeah, we're probably are looking at bringing in families. Now, you know, this week. We learned more from uh our governor. Who who just. Put a number of uh folks in Norfolk. Uh, in in the the former prison. And now um from a, I mean, I don't know how much you guys take into consideration. The impact on our schools. Because. Already the numbers they're talking about are going to impact the middle school and the in the the high school. And then if you tap on top of that. Uh, if if our seven hundred and fifty units. Are geared toward. Families with children. I quite frankly, I don't know how the hell we're going to be able to do it. But but I don't know how much that type of stuff comes into your planning. And and my thought process, and and I'm not, this is not a sophisticated thought. This is I'm I'm actually talking out loud. Is. You know, maybe if if as I heard somebody earlier say, maybe we need smaller groups. Of places. And that might not generate that type of um. Uh, attraction for that. That's just going to. Destroy uh or or at least. Uh, challenge our schools. But that's that's my only point. Um, I'll certainly be researching all this much more closely. Uh, but I think your ideas are are I I I like the idea of the. Uh, of of the outlets. Um, I I had thought of, quite frankly. Um, thinking that, you know, where we what we could use as a a senior community. Which is, I I understand that's what maybe that earlier um process uh or that earlier prod- project may lead to. But. You know, those are, those are things that that. Cities and towns can do. So people can stay in the town that they. You know, raise their kids and everything else. So um, I always thought that it's as as the outlets begin to fail. And you know, as as retail begins to fail, I always thought that would be something that somebody would grab up for that type of. Um. That type of community. So um. Those are just my random thoughts and I and I appreciate the hard work you guys are doing. I I did hear at the meeting. Uh, on the night that that you folks are are coming up with as many. You know. Feasible plans as possible. And I know it's not an easy job, so. Uh, please keep up the the good work and and, you know, I certainly will pay a lot more attention to this. Uh, as we go forward.
Thank you, Mister Purdue. Appreciate the comment. Yeah, one, one of the things that we can't do unfortunately is. Is zone this um. As senior housing. They that's that's a definite. No, no, as far as the the M B T A, they we cannot put age restrictions on it. Would be ideal if we could, because if we could put seniors in there, then we're not having the impacts on the schools, but.
But I I will also note that, and if you ask to the the fire chief, he will make this comment, seniors have a different draw on town services. They still have a draw on town services. But it's different. It's not the schools. You've got your senior center, your town hall, you've got fire, ambulance, um, EMS. You know, he's training people and then they're leaving, you know, it's it's very hard to find, um, you know, people. To fill those positions. Um, as well. And again, he gets calls over at the um, the one over at Ledge View quite a bit. Um, for that, for those. So it's just a, you know, a a. A comment as well. I I understand. Nobody wants kids. Um. But. You know, also understanding seniors also have a draw. As well on services. So.
They do. I think I think financially, it's probably, it may not have quite the impact that. Education does, but it certainly does. And I as as someone who lives down the street from. Uh. The assisted living center and or the assisted living facility and the apartments. Uh. There's at least one trip a day. Uh, emergency services down down Madison Street, sometimes two, three. Four times a day, they're heading down there. I don't know whether they're going to the assisted living. Or to the apartments or whether it's a combination of both, but it's. It it's. It's a regular occurrence. Definitely daily, sometimes multiple times daily, so. Mister Eminem, you had your hand raised to make a comment.
Thank you, Mister Chairman Woodhams. Uh, I I share your sentiment. That the responsibility of playing but right now is to identify a site. I also have a sense of urgency. That we we need to go ahead as a town, particularly the planning board, to make a decision on a site soon. I I think of this because if we were to make this decision, say by June thirtieth, with the next two or three meetings. Three months later, now at the end of September. We're now in the town meeting time. So if we're going to have a preapproval process accomplished. We need to go ahead and make a decision on what it is and submit it. I also like to add that I think it's very important. For us to go ahead and include a ten percent affordability requirement. Uh, I sat on the zoning board of appeals. Uh, for nineteen years, and I sat through several forty B hearings. It was frustrating going through that process, but we have now accomplished that goal here in town. And I don't want to lose that that strength that we have. Uh, let's make sure anything that gets built maintains the ten percent we've required. So please, don't let that slip away. Uh. So. So the affordability, the ten percent, I I kind of like that mixed use, but if we do the mixed use. Maybe we should think back on that initial proposal by your consultant to have a part of your units i- in the town center. And part by I four ninety-five. Having the part by the town center include the uh retail business. My only concern back then was. It might. Be used in place of what's there. But. Maybe I I was being a scaremonger. We do have somebody who's been talking to you and is actively pursuing having a mixed use. Development there. So I think that's very positive. And that will continue, I hope. Uh. Another thing I like to just make sure that you you're aware of, and this will need to be really presented at town meeting, but. Uh. The fact that that's seven hundred and fifty units is. To me, an extreme value. Because we know we don't have town sewers. So if anybody's going to have dense housing, they're going to have to put in a package treatment plan. That takes up space. Uh, also. One of the comments made at the hearing last week was that. This was not an affordability. Plan by the state. It was a housing construction plan. And they made that point because when the plan was first presented to the state legislature, it was an affordability housing plan. However. Developers came to them and told the state, hey, we can't make any profit. If we have to have the have to have this ten percent affordability. Having heard that. Light goes on. Let's go ahead and keep the ten percent because it's good for us. But it's also good for keeping people from coming into Rantham. And furthermore, we have people have to put in a package treatment plan. So when I think of the hundred and seventy-seven communities that are required to do this. By having. No sep- no sewers. And including affordability, we make ourselves a less attractive place to go, come. So. I I'm inclined to go ahead. Let us get something at a town meeting and at the town meeting say yes or no. But as planning board members. You need to go ahead and present something that could be accepted by this state. Uh, we don't want to end up, as I wrote in my that recent email. We don't want them to shoot us down after we've gone to town meeting. Let's make sure we have something that will actually work. If it turns out the law gets shut down, we do have this window where they might send an application. My feeling is. Where the one of the less likely communities to have that happen. So I would rather take that risk. Than have the risk of having to go into legal. Uh, fights with the state. Other towns may well have already started that process. I don't want to see us join it. Uh. So I know you guys have a tough job and I appreciate your service to the community and thank you for grappling with this process, but uh. Good luck. I hope you can come to some resolution soon and not drag your feet and best wishes. Go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. And I I absolutely um. Agree with your sentiment. I I think um. We'd be crazy not to include the ten percent. Um, affordable.
Or one or two percent more.
I do, but there's there's real strict guidelines. If you go above the ten percent, you have to. Do a whole bunch more legwork to prove that. Do a whole bunch more legwork to prove that. What is it, Rachel? The economic?
Economic feasibility study.
Feasibility, thank.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah.
Yeah, so to go, to go above the ten percent, I, I agree with you. You know, I'd say, hey, sure, let's make it twenty-five.
We had talked about that in some of our other projects.
And it might be something that you guys can include, you know, petition for that. Once you get it sort of settled, the location and just say, hey, we, we're thinking about it. Now we want to go up to fifteen percent. Similar to your senior living bylaw, you know, to make it consistent.
Yeah.
If we go to twenty-five percent, then you know, we can, we can really accomplish what Leo just.
Well, I think we, yeah, we, we've got to, we've got to definitely. Go with at least a ten percent and, and to, to kind of further expand on what Leo said, not only if you have to. Create a. Wastewater treatment facility. Not only does that take up room. It's expensive. It costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
To build it and then to maintain it. You know, I think ultimately Rhythm's not going to be the number one target. For this kind of the, you know, large scale development, maybe some. Right. But I don't think it would be a huge target as much as towns that have. Municipal sewer and, and, you know, the different in- infrastructure. Like we still have a chance that we could get some of it, but. But I think we need to be prepared to, to present something that. That could go through in case, you know, we don't, we get backed into a corner, we have to have something. That the state's going to say, okay, and then I guess we just kind of hope that. It never really comes to fruition to the degree where it's, you know. It harms the town. And, and yeah, there, there's. Been a lot of discussion about the affordable, you know, oh, you don't want affordable housing, but this isn't about affordable housing.
Right.
You know, the, the state's not pushing it to be affordable housing. They're just pushing it to create units.
Well, and I, I would, I mean, and then the, sorry, this is a planner. I'm going to let you in on the planner world. But there's big, there's big A affordable, which is the deed restricted affordable. And then there's just affordable, what I can afford. I granted, I know you don't want me living in Rhythm because I would cause a ruckus.
Perfuffle.
I want.
Thank you. That's a much better word. I.
Can't they move a cot into your office? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, they don't know that yet. They don't know that. That's, yes.
That's what that back room is for. Especially sleeps.
Um. Aren't we? I, I, I just want to kind of take the temperature of the board, right? I mean, do we think it's worth? Trying to pursue what it would look like to propose the, the outlets and? Do we want to kind of put on tape here that we want to explore that? And then when Mister McKnight watches this, he'll know kind of. How to, how to plan for the next session? I mean, if we're going to try to move towards something. Or are we still? Are there, there members here who don't, don't think that's a good idea? I just don't know.
I, I would be comfortable exploring that. I think it makes sense. I mean, I think. It feels like with the outlets, there's a decent chance that it's if, not when. I mean, the internet's a real thing. I mean. So I think it worth, it's worth exploring, especially if we can get a pre-approval from the state and. I, I initially loved the idea of maybe rezoning if Milton or somebody else wins, but. They just pushed the briefing schedule back by the time that's heard. And then by the time, I mean, it's in the two thirds, so I, I think this is a, a great alternative.
Rob?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I brought up the Abbey property, the outlets we've talked about, uh, from early on. Let's not forget the outlets are three million dollars a year of tax revenue. So we want to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. If the goose dies, then obviously we need to do something. But. I think. We've got a long way to go in terms of potential site evaluations.
Where is this Abbey property? I don't, I'm not sure I know where it is you're talking about.
Just up past. Arnold Street, just past the Big Apple.
Arnold Street to Sheldon Road.
Oh, okay. I'm not real familiar with that.
Beautiful place, beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a big property and they have a huge expanse down the hill towards Sheldon Road. Um. And. You know, they are carving up that property for solar farms, so. I don't want to be the last man to the party either. But I think.
Make great candy too.
They make great candy. Yeah.
In that case, I'm going to have to take a ride up there. It is my birthday. I mean, you know, maybe they'll have something for me.
Yeah. My, my thought, my thoughts on the, on the outlets, I don't think. I don't think we're going to. Kill the goose because I don't think anybody's going to. Buy the outlets so they can tear it down and put up. Seven hundred and fifty units of housing. I think it's a, it's a. Look at it as a long term. If things fail up there, what could go in there? And if we have this zoned this way, at least we know what to expect. I don't think I'm. I don't think I'm against it. I think we should pursue that, but I think we should pursue. Something more along the lines of what we had. Uh, been presented initially, which is, you know, the center of town. As, as, as part of it and, and, and maybe the. The corridor along between four ninety-five. You've come up with a couple of different scenarios that we can. Sort of whittle it down between them. I'm just not convinced that the outlets are going to pass muster with a pre-approval from the state. So I think we want to have a plan B.
I guess I, I, I'm cool with all that, but I guess my concern is if. We don't have an application for the project that we've been talking about downtown. And if we suddenly designate that. As this. I can see them coming back with a bigger. You know, project there. I mean, we kind of. Asked them to keep it manageable and they did. And they seem comfortable with that. I, I almost feel like. I don't know if they're in a waiting game with us and see what we do to see. I don't know where they're at with that. Rachel, you're shaking your head, so maybe you know a lot more than I do. All the time. What about this?
They, they've been really great to work with and they've even suggested, um, you know, coming up with some sort of a, like a development agreement that if. This zoning does pass, you know, they would still move forward with their project. Um, you know, and then my concern with that was like, okay, that's great, but yeah, what if you just pull out and somebody else comes in? And now they've got fifteen units per acre, you know, let's whatever. So that's why. In the options that I presented, I presented and recommended the mixed, mandatory mixed use for that downtown. And make sure that the zoning bylaw reflects what your vision is from twenty eighteen. You'd just be making it. You know, by right. If they, if they meet the bylaw, if they want to do anything above that bylaw, it's a special permit. You know, so they, and it would still be a site plan approval. You'd still have a fifty-three G to sort of like review it, you know, peer reviewers, stormwater, all that stuff. Um, but they have been very great to work with and have offered that. Um, they were trying to, their attorney was trying to work with the word, like the language on it is, is all. Um, so it's still in the, in the works.
I, I, I kind of like the idea of that. Uh, just as, as Rachel outlined it there, and then the rest of it down by the outlets or whatever. I mean, you know, we were going to put the rest of it in Waltham Corner. When I take that piece, I mean, there's not that much in Waltham Corner, you know? If we, if we, if we take the, the, the remaining fifty acre, whatever, you know, remaining from the fifty acres and we put that down. Somewhere and somewhere at the outlets, does it, does that, is there some reason we couldn't do it that way?
No, we could certainly do it that way. And, and in fact. You know, going back to the, the possibility of somebody. Going into the center of town and building something that's fifteen. Units per acre. You know, if you remember when Rachel first presented it, one of the, one of the things that we could do is. Twenty-five acres in the downtown, maintain it as. Eight units per acre, which is what we currently have it at.
Right.
The other twenty-five that we put at. The outlets or wherever we put it, you put it at twenty-two units per acre. So you're still getting between the two. Districts, you're getting the.
The average of fifteen or whatever it is.
Right, yeah, yeah, right. You had eight there, twenty-two there, that's thirty between or averages out to the fifteen, right, Rachel? We can still do that. So then we wouldn't have the. Risk that somebody's going to go into the center of town and put in a fifteen unit per acre development. Because we say, you know, you can, you want to. Build there, you still have to do the eight, but if you want to do the higher density. You know, it would be an, another parcel. Because my other concern with that is too. When we developed the center of town, that was a long process. We had a lot of public input. We had multiple public hearings. We took a lot of things into consideration for. All the abutists. And we, and we really worked with them and we came up with something that they could all be comfortable with. And that. I would hate to pull the rug out from under them at this point. Because of this. Thing that's been forced on us by the state saying, well, you know, but. I think we still need to try to. You know, we would lose the special permit. Option. But we would still maintain. You know, what the zoning was that we, the whole town agreed to. Back then, and I think that's, that's an important thing. Um, to consider.
Question, Rachel, aside, i- if we were to bring a village zone B into this conversation. Aside from special permit. Authority, what else would we lose, uh, with, with the MBTA zoning versus our own village zone B currently?
Uh, we would lose twenty-five percent of the required units. So we would, instead of seven hundred and fifty, it would be five hundred and twenty-something or other, five hundred and sixty. So with the mandatory mixed use, with a mandatory mixed use district, you're allowed to reduce your unit count by twenty-five percent.
So if we include that downtown area as it is, as, as we're hoping it will be developed. And then we take the rest of whatever, we still, we still lose. Those. Hundred and ninety units?
Yes.
Which is a benefit from our standpoint, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're gaining a hundred and ninety that we're not having to get, let someone build, right?
We would lose the opportunity to build those additional units.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, the site is still, you know, it's still going to have to meet, there's not a lot of wetlands, but there are some wetlands on the property. They're still going to have to meet that. They're still. Going to have to build us, uh, a septic, um, tr- treatment facility, which they're working on right now. And we're also. Trying to work with them on a way to. Increase that. Through and getting a grant to see what we could do to increase it, to include all the downtown businesses if they wanted to. Because they're all constrained with onsite septic, um, as well. Um, again, that, that would be a grant that we wouldn't be able to apply for, for a project that.
On the other, on the other hand, if they want us to zone our downtown according to this thing, they might want to approve our grant for the stupid septic project.
Right, right, yeah.
Maybe the leverage works the other way as, as easily, right?
That's true. That's very true, yeah.
I mean, one could make the case, couldn't one, Mister Orbin?
Okay, so if you're looking at Villa Zone B, you're going to get roughly, I think, two hundred units on twenty-five acres. Plus, plus commercial, then, that, and, and then elsewhere in town on another site or multiple sites, a net. Of, uh, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty, something like that. That's what we'd end up doing.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
And be it Abbey or the outlets or, and again, if they're only putting three sixty, then maybe it's not as quick to blow off the outlets and kill the golden goose, Rob. You know, for, or maybe the outlet. Does something where they. You know, they, they shrink the size of the outlet and then they put this thing next to it for a ready customer base. I don't know.
Right, exactly. They, they had, they, they, they kind of, they could kind of, um, reimagine their. Their. Their retail mix to be something.
Village century feel. I like the way you think, Jim.
I mean, to me, Mister Chairman, as long as Village Zone B, ten years from now, is pretty much on ninety-five percent of what we envisioned at town meeting some years ago. Through the process you discussed. I, I, I'm fine with including it. You know what I mean? I, I guess it, it might be worth. Sacrificing special permit authority for the sake of reducing total count between whatever. Number of develops by a hundred and ninety units. That might be worth it.
Yep, yeah. Like I said, my, my, my biggest concern is, is to. That, that we, we as a board presented that and we kind of. Gave our word as a board to the people of the town that this is what. Would go there and they, they agreed with us and I would hate to.
Yeah.
I would hate to change that on them. And, and if we, if we can keep what we all agreed to as a zoning. Even if we lose the special permitting process, I guess I would, I would be okay with that as well.
Mister English, I'd be happy to, uh, I don't know how your recovery is going, but I'd be happy to come and, uh, pick you up and. Ride around town with you a little bit and hear your ideas on anything other than this.
You just want to go up to the Abbey.
I missed the shindig and I hear he's a party animal, so, you know.
You know, Chuck, you infected him with the chocolate and now he's.
Yeah, that's what that is. He just wants to go, he just wants to go candy hopping. That's all.
I'm fully ambulatory, so, you know, I don't, I don't need a ride. I can pick you up in the smart car and we can go for a ride.
Either way.
That was a joke. Um, yeah, but what, what, at least Chuck got it. Rachel got it. Uh, listen, I'm, I'm open to anything. I, I've done a lot of, uh, uh, travel since I came on the board. Uh, in town that I'd never been. I drive down roads. I've never been down to see what's down there and try and understand the town better. All of these things help. Uh, so there's no. There's no downside. To looking at these potential sites. So I, I, I'm happy to do that anytime. I'm retired, so. Generally, except for today. Today is my wife's birthday and I think I'm going to get murdered in my sleep tonight for doing this, but.
Sorry, I forgot about that. I would have cut this much shorter.
She must be a wonderful woman with a birthday like that. Us Tori have to stick together.
With me. Let's get back to the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, a comment that was made and, uh, agreed, um. Uh, also was floating in my head is, you know, just FYI, the outlets do already have a treatment facility on their site, so. Much more likely that development will happen, um, there. They already have the infrastructure existing, just, you know.
Right.
Because I under- I understand where people are coming from on this, so just, you know, trying to be. Fully transparent.
That would mean that the outlets have. Ceased to be, in which case this town's got. Much bigger problems than seven hundred and fifty units of housing.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, well, if we have nothing more, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to our next meeting on June fifth at seven fifteen.
So moved, second.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion, roll call, vote. Mister Boasi.
Aye.
Mister English.
Aye.
Mister Lawrence.
Aye.
Mister Maloney.
Aye.
Mister Orbin.
Aye.
Charles Woodhams, aye.